Are there any changes to the agenda?
There's not.
So move, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Okay, first, we are going to do public input. I would just ask that everybody be respectable. And you're each, each individual is allowed two minutes to speak. Mr. Russ will be timing. And we will do the budget request, budget input first and then cataract school. We'll keep them together. So first individual is Jessica Carter.
Good evening, board. I am Jessica Carter. I live on Canary Avenue in Sparta. If you are here to represent Cataract Elementary, please stand. Thank you. So I'm a huge believer that we know we have problems. This, the last couple of school years have been full of problems with COVID and budget cuts. And you name it. So instead of being problem focused, let's be solution focused. So one thing that we've noticed is there is a lot of administration. So what about possible salary caps? Have we looked at everything in the budget such as SVLA CPI raises? Has normally at my house, when I look at my budget, everything that I know is going to happen, I approve of or disapprove of with my husband before I make that final determination. Life happens, but I plan for everything that I can before I make the final determination. So I know there were things at the last meeting that like the CPI and raises that we weren't sure of before. So maybe we should take a look and make sure that everything is on the docket before we possibly talk about other budget cuts. So we, I know there's win funding where the school district really they absorb the costs. And maybe we can look at maybe having the parents pay for a little bit or looking at possible grants. There are a lot of possible options for that. So SVLA, there's declining numbers. We could save, I believe the figure was 1.1, 1.2 million dollars by encouraging parents to look at other free opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Arlene Sprague.
Thank you, I'll flip this speak. My name's Arlene Sprague. My address is actually close to the Monroe County Jackson County line. I am near Black River Falls area. But I am a mom whose children went to Cataract Elementary. I am a mom of one son who graduated from Sparta area school district. I'm a mom of a junior right now present in the school district. I believe that every child should have the same education. And I believe they can get it from this district and I highly support this district. The district should also remember that we are all employees of the district and we need to respect each other. We all want the same thing. And if you can't say something nice, don't say it at all. Education first. My children have gotten a graded education from this district as I just stated. That includes the Cataract Elementary. I have and will continue to support that school as I will this district. But as many in this room, I have concerns. Who is holding who accountable for issues that are happening and getting us to this point? As far as the referendum goes, let's make it clear. Sparta is not the only one or Cataract is not the only one who voted no. Out of 10 districts, all but two voted yes or all voted no. The only ones that voted yes is the city of Sparta and I believe Clinton. I do have that information. Why is that? Some say they didn't understand the wording as to what was put out to the public. No mention of transferring funds and why they voted no. They also said that they didn't care for the current individual in our administrative office. And that's what they wanted, so they voted no. People did not ask for the specific wordage to the referendum and they should have. Some that did wrote the administration a email on March 17th and did not get a response until Mr. Russ acting interim responded on April 2nd. That's too long of time. We can do another referendum. I called the county office today. It has to be on her desk by May 31st. I just want to say though, ending, we should know better and let's do better for our district, especially our kids and their education.
Erin Johnson. Erin, there's a couple of board members that are having a little hard time hearing.
Okay.
So maybe if you could pull the mic down just a little bit.
Is this better? Okay. My name is Erin Johnson and I currently have a student at Cataract Elementary. And although you're going to hear some great stories about Cataract coming up, my concern is more over what appears to be irresponsible spending and lack of administration in past years. My concern has grown after discussion with community members and watching recent board meetings and either not getting answers or being told, we don't know when we ask questions. I understand that hard cuts must be made, but why do we continue to jeopardize our children, teachers and learning environment and continue to let the administration make decisions that are not in the best interest of our children? Many of you know that I emailed the board yesterday and I had a lot of questions and I realized that that's obviously not something you can respond to in five minutes. But I've been asking these questions. Why have I not gotten an answer? I feel that if I ask for a budget for Cataract and what's listed under the $880,000 spend, that should be easily provided. I have yet to receive it. I know people have jobs, but again, this information should be public information. If this information can't be provided and it's not readily available, how are you as board members making decisions that impact our children correctly and making the decisions that are right for our school district as a whole? One of the questions that I have heard a lot is about these ESSR funds. I was out doing some research today and Thomas School District has an ESSR plan posted right on their main page as to what their spending is going for. What's our ESSR funds funding? Where is that going? How come I can't get that answered? And now you want to cut a school that's near and dear to me? I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair to our kids and I don't think it's fair to our educators. So I guess I just, I'll close with, I've been hearing a lot of we don't knows. Let's turn those we don't knows into answers that you can give us that justify the cuts and the spending deficit that there is out there. Thank you for your time.
Gordon Bace.
Good evening, board. Thanks for this time that you're giving us. I have in front of me, I have the list of the Fund 10 budgets balances that were given to me. I, by the way, I did, I'll follow that lady that just talked. She got the slow walk through. I asked for it on March 25th. I got it on April 9th. Printed up, it's there. That should have been minutes, but anyhow. The Fund 10 balance is the balance that has been left at the bottom of the Fund 10 account. And the issue is it was put together there for use. It's a savings account. I can't understand why we have $7 million in there in 2019, $8 million in 2020, estimated $9 million this year. To me, there's no need for a closing of a cataract school. They have 2% of the students and 1% of the budget. Why would you, why would you in good conscience do that? Last meeting, last time, they talked about the elephant is in the room. Mid-management. We always go for the low hanging fruit, the people that won't, that are involved in our, with our students, they're touching our students there with education. And we're, we're leaving mid-management, which is more money and we're leaving them. Okay. It's nice to hear the concern for a gym floor and how this looks to other, other schools when they come here. How about our math and reading tests? I have been coming to school board since last summer. I have yet to hear one mention of our poor reading and math skills. And yet we do a D minus thing where we graduate students that are receiving Fs. That's unethical. To send those students into the world, they can't read and write. We're overspending and we're underperforming. Thank you.
Sarah Jarvis.
Hello, board. Do you want me to lower it farther? Okay, there we go. Everybody hear me okay? All right. So I'm here to address the board. I'm Sarah Jarvis. I'm a first grade teacher out at Cataract. I live at N 6103 Big Creek Road in Bangor. Couple of things I wanted to address. And again, I've emailed some of these concerns already and some have been covered. So I'll be brief. Like some people have mentioned, Cataract is a pretty special place. A lot of the staff wanted to get up and speak tonight about how wonderful Cataract was. We were worried we would start crying and I'm ugly crier. You don't want to see that. So I'm going to stick also with some facts. Just some concerns we have about budget cuts and things that could be looked at differently before we look at something as extremist closing an elementary school. We discussed core academics, our scores, our reading. Our kids aren't doing as well as they should be. I'll be the first one to admit it. We can do better. We should be doing better. Over the last 10 years that I've been in this district, we've hired several additional positions to try to remediate that. We have interventionists. We have interventionist assistants. We have instructional coaches. We've done all of these things in what I feel is a Band-Aid on a flood situation. We need to be paying more attention to the classroom teachers that we have in place right now. They need to be trained properly. They need professional development and they need to be doing the best for our kids. Our scores haven't gone up. It hasn't helped with what we've tried to do over the last few years. I myself served as an interventionist. I see value in that position. But when we're looking at extreme budget cuts and potentially losing teachers and closing schools, those are positions that I feel that we could look at cutting back on. If we have money to do them, absolutely. It's an additional support. But I feel like before we look at cutting classroom teachers and closing schools, we need to look at some of those non-classroom teaching positions that don't have a direct impact all day, every day on our students. And just in closing, as a classroom teacher, I don't really get much say in the budget. I don't get asked what I think could be done to help the budget. I don't get asked where I think there's waste going on in the district. I think we should be. But as classroom teachers and certainly as students, we have not had the responsibility of handling the budget. So I don't feel that we should bear the burden for it not being handled properly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jason Boris. Lee Calpin.
Anyway, just personal observations and comments. Last week, a comment was made about Leon School and the kids being traveling about as far as a cataract. With all due respect, nobody in Leon, and I'm not disrespecting Leon either. No students in Leon are passing by a school that this district has stuck probably almost half a million dollars in the last seven years, modernizing it. There's been fencing, there's been glass doors, there's been security, there's been cameras. All this is being added. And I think the thing that would really help is if we told our politicians in Washington and Madison to quit stimulating us and put it into our schools. Governor's got $3.8 billion right now he wants to give away. That might look good in a school. I don't know what that comes out at divided between 400 schools. But it probably would help. Also tonight on the agenda was a Spartan head on the floor. How do you put a Spartan head on and lay off 18 people? That's all I have.
Thanks, Lee. George Prager.
Hi, board. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm going to try to keep these notes in line. My name is George Prager and I live on a family farm 17 miles from Sparta city limits on Aaron Avenue. I have two children in the school district. I want it to be noted that there is a petition with over 1,100 signatures asking to keep Cataract open. And everyone on this board has received an email with that information. My parents bought that farm in 1972. They raised five children there over four decades. We all attended Cataract and graduated from Sparta High School. Over four decades, my parents fought to keep Cataract open. Now I stand here tonight doing the same. What's changed? Why does Cataract continue to be on the chopping block? We are tired of it. But here we are. Here we stand willing to fight and hoping this board can find alternative ways to properly budget the funds and keep this wonderful school open. Cataract has been lied to so many times. In 2018, we were told no change will occur except that Cataract will become pre-K through 4K. We were told this was true for the next 20 years at least. Lies like these have severely fractured our trust in the Sparta area school district. We need to rebuild this trust. It can be done and it can start tonight. People have asked me, what does Cataract stand for? To me, four words come to mind. Trust, honesty, commitment and loyalty. This is true within our community and especially to our school. To all the Cataract Elementary teachers and staff, thank you for being the best of the best. For all the community members and all of you who believe in Cataract Elementary, thank you for fighting for what's right. And to this board, you have the power to find a way to keep this school alive and well. I believe in you. Let's start rebuilding a bridge of trust right now, right here tonight. And we can start by voting no to closing Cataract Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Scheidel.
Good afternoon or evening, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Kevin Scheidel live off of Dallas Avenue up by, by Cataract. Sorry there, George is a pretty hard person to follow up with. Mainly what I wanted to just come and talk to you tonight about was a continuation of what George was saying was trust and loyalty and stuff like that. Just to keep me on focus here. Obviously, I'm here to save Cataract Elementary School. And I would like to see a respectable relationship between the board members and the administration so that I can vote in a way that I don't have to be told how to keep Cataract Elementary School open or feel like I am salt and peppered into guilt or shame for something else. It's been way too long since I've been able to go to the voting polls and actually vote without being told how to keep Cataract School open. I don't think there's any school board member in your shoes or in the state of Wisconsin anywhere that would want to be in your shoes that's going to actually take time to close an elementary school while we are spending money to remodel a football field in this school district. It's just bad, very bad business to even go down that road. This is also not going to help any of the trust issues that are going on between the district, the administration and the public itself that goes to the polls to vote on these referendums. In fact, it's probably only going to make things worse. Our neighboring districts are watching us. They have welcomed our students and gave them refuge during times of uncertain over the last three years, uncertain times over the last three years. They've taken our students and welcomed them into their schools. School board administrations are very much needed to rebuild this trust within our district and our community. Putting Cataract Elementary School on the chopping block two weeks before an election is not helpful to any of this. I want to see a community relationship where the school board and the administration within the Cataract Elementary School was viewed as equal. I want to see Cataract viewed as an equal to Herman. I want Herman to be viewed as an equal to Cataract. And closing, I think it's very important that we point out that Cataract Elementary School does things for the Sparta School District that Herman cannot do. Likewise, Herman can do things for the Sparta School District that Cataract cannot do. Together, we are Sparta Area School District. Let's work together. Thank you.
Bethany Anan. Did I say that right?
Hi, I'm Bethany Anan and I'm a Cataract resident. I keep circling back around trying to make myself understand what was so different about the referendum four years ago to last week's. Four years ago, I had district employees reaching out to me because I was the president of Cataract PTO. We had pamphlets being sent home in our kids' backpacks, posts all over social media and in newspapers, so much literature being shoved down our throats, as it should be. When we're talking about things this monumental, this time, this time that didn't happen. Why? It wasn't until just weeks before the vote that we learned Cataract was on the chopping block yet again. After reassurances were made that if we passed the referendum four years ago, we could keep our school for the next 20 years, that no significant change would happen to our school or to us. Was it all a lie? Were we led into a false pretense of safety? Was this the end goal all along? How can you make promises that are written in black and white, spread across social media and sent home with our children just to go back on them? I'm asking you to uphold these promises, to not sacrifice our children to an unbalanced budget. Recently, when there were questions about the dispersment of funds, a board member made the comment, you don't use one-time funds to pay down debt. You do something great with it, something lasting. I think our children are something great and their education is worth one-time funds. I wish all of you could have been there at our community meeting on Monday. I wish you all could have heard the stories that we had to share about how this school helped my family immensely when I was diagnosed, when I was in the hospital and going back and forth, that they made sure that my family had meals. They made sure that my kids were okay, that they had hugs when days were hard. We are a family. This is our family. We're asking you to say no today to closing Cataract. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Bees.
Hi there, my name is Emily Bees. I live at 7511 County Highway I. I have closer neighbors with Fort McCoy than Sparta most of the time. I am a parent to two students who went through Cataract. One currently is still there. I'm not a lifelong Cataract resident. I did not grow up in the area. I don't even have a single family member to support me in the area. That can be a really difficult thing when you're raising kids to not have close comforting support. When my children started at Cataract, I learned very quickly that they would have a whole load of staff that cared for them in the same way my family, my best friends would. The staff there know your students before they ever even teach them in a classroom. Before I start crying, I'll get to the business things. Last meeting, we discussed bus times. My children are some of the first kids on the bus in the morning and they are also some of the last kids off the bus at the end of the night. My children get on the bus at 6:25. I don't know very many students who are up and dressed and standing in a dark driveway at 6:25 in the morning. My husband is 40 years old and he remembers this occurring when he was a child. So it hasn't improved. My daughter, who is in Cataract, has an hour or more bus time depending on how many students are riding. She often gets home after 3:5, 3:10. My middle schooler has an hour and 15 minutes on a good day. Today, she did not arrive home till almost 4:30 due to weather. I don't see how bus times and hour plus increments is okay, especially for pre-K or our younger students. I've heard a community, other neighborhood schools closing. I don't think the other neighborhood schools had kids who are almost 20 miles away from Sparta. Lastly, I know all of our supporters never want to listen to, they might close Cataract, but I'm a realist and I think of all the situations. So I ask if that's how you choose to vote, to please look at the staff that are at that school. If we lose the building, those staff and those teachers should all be given classrooms at Herman. They have put in their time and they've put in their effort to build the community that we're all fighting for. And they're the reason that Cataract is what it is. They are some of your best teachers and they deserve to have that space. And next year, when our students go to school and everything that they ever knew about schools dripped away from them, please give them those familiar faces to make that transition easier. Thank you.
Abby Bees.
Hi, my name is Abby Bees. I live 7511 County Highway I. I was a student at Cataract Elementary. I think Cataract should stay open because I met all my friends there. I went to Cataract for six years. I've been friends with my friends since preschool. All the kids there learned to be nice to each other and not to bully. My brother Hunter went to Cataract for pre-K and kindergarten. Then he went to Sparta. He started to struggle and I think he would have done better in Cataract because there are smaller classes and the teacher are really nice and kind. The Cataract School is my second home. What I see, when I see it, it makes me feel happy. I like to thank all the teachers for being so kind and caring to us. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Abby. That concludes our public input. I would like to thank everybody. Oh, okay. Candidates? I'm not going to deny, I don't have a sheet. Candidates? Candidates, my name. Candace, come on up.
I'm Candace Warner and I live on Highway 16 here in Sparta. I was a state employee for 22 years. The last 14 of those years was in a supervisory position. So I understand how state budgeting and funding works. You use it or lose it. That is how it works. Not that I like it and that it's not how I budget at home, but that is how it works. And Sparta School District is not going to change that. Even 20 to 25 years of propaganda from citizens for real progress hasn't been able to change that school budgeting, but they have been successful in getting voters to vote no. Now we have to cut $2.1 million for each of the next two years. And since the referendum did not pass, that means we don't need as much state funding. So in the next biennium, we will be getting even less state funding. This is what Tony was trying to impress upon us at the forum when he stated, "Those who vote no don't understand the referendum." Plus, our taxes would not go up because we were not getting new money. Since we will not get as much in the next biennial budget, that is when our taxes will go up. And as in the past years, the farmers will feel the tax increases the most so that they will need to sell land so new houses can be built to increase the tax base. That is reality and that is how it works. With the referendum not passing, tier one and tier two cuts may have to be made. Going forward, the Board of Education has to make sustainable cuts that will get us through the next biennium as well. I went to all three of the referendum meetings and the candidate forum. I heard Todd, John, and Tony share their knowledge of state budgeting and Wisconsin school finance. I wish the referendum would have passed. You guys are in a really tough place this biennium and next biennium because we're going to be short. But I wish you well and I hope the community can work well with you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle. Good evening. My name is Michelle Glant from Bangor and I am speaking on behalf of the Sparta Education Association. The SCA firmly believes that the faculty are the backbone of the educational system. We are students' learning facilitator, their curriculum specialist, their mentor, their shoulder to cry on, their role model, and yet an underappreciated voice of this community. During COVID, we went above and beyond creating online curriculum. We worked day and night answering questions, sending emails, making phone calls, doing individual Zooms outside of the workday, all while managing our own families. This year, we came back to a school year and we had to work twice as hard as the previous year, re-engaging students in the very idea of learning. Somehow, many forgot how to learn, how to behave, how to do work on their own. We worked tirelessly to help students to regain those skills. The struggle has been enormous. The staff is exhausted and yet we keep on giving. After all of this, where do teachers as stakeholders in this community stand? We stand here looking at proposed budget cuts at the expense of the teaching staff, as if our burden has been nothing and of course, we should just give more. We see proposals to increase the cost to staffs for their healthcare and decrease our retirement benefits. We see cuts to the edge program, a loss of the middle school German program which has afforded students numerous post-secondary opportunities. Have we explored the cuts to administration who costs twice as much as any teacher? How about middle management? How about instructional coaches who are not in the classroom? We see cuts to a study hall aid position. What is the result of that cut? A loss of prep time to already overstressed, overburdened teachers who will now be required to give up their valuable prep time. How about administration or middle management covers the study hall while they're working? If it's no big deal to work and supervise a study hall at the same time? The district has seen an exodus of teachers. There are plenty of local districts that have numerous openings. Finding teachers willing to come to this district will be a struggle, let alone retaining any of the quality staff that we currently have. In closing, I ask, where has the discussion been with SCA about these proposed cuts? Though we met with administration, we had no input. We instead were just told by administration what the cuts should be. And no wonder why the cuts have been laid then on the teachers and the staff and the student programming when better options for cuts remain. The lack of respect we received from the stakeholders in this community who voted no, along with administration not seeking our input into these decisions, is disheartening to teachers. The SCA looks forward to discussing these matters with administration and the board, and we deserve this opportunity before the cuts are made so you can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Hello. Krista Anderson. I live on Canton Road in Sparta. I currently have one child who goes to Cataract, three others that went there. So I would like to ask you guys, imagine yourselves as Cataract parents. Now imagine telling your child the school they went to or will be going to next year that they're so excited about is going to be closed. So now they have to go someplace else. I personally don't want to tell my child that. I can already see the heartbreak and devastation on his face. I recently attended the Cataract Community Meeting. We, as our small community, were attempting to make the point that the numbers of saving over $400,000 a year by closing Cataract were inaccurate due to members who would open enrollment. We were told it didn't matter if they lost our children to open enrollment. We were also told that it isn't our choice as parents where we send our kids. We choose to send our kids to Cataract. There are plenty of other cuts that could be made instead of closing Cataract, and we saw the facts last week. Cataract Elementary is a part of us. It's our family. So what's being proposed tonight is all of you deciding if we can keep our family. Your decision will affect our entire life dynamic. We want our kids to matter and stop putting the price tag on our Cataract kids and their education. Bring back the referendum. Delay the voting. There's more to it. Thank you.
Have we missed anybody that wishes to speak? We have none. Okay. How do we get that? We have one online?
Okay.
Ms. Glant registered online to speak today.
All right. Okay. Real good. That concludes our public input. I'd like to thank everybody for speaking and coming out this evening. All right. Our first order of business is the budget reduction decision.
Discussion, yeah. Before Ms. Hauser gets into the meat of the presentation, I want to say thank you to all who came out tonight and thank you for all who support our school district. And this past week, last week, we had the community input session. And I said that we need to rally around and support everybody. And I can tell you even, you know, there's discussions had to be had, decisions had to be made. I was very proud of our entire community about how they came together from what I saw about being respectful and making sure that everyone's had a voice. We heard a lot about trust and the decisions that are becoming forward tonight are very difficult. And if you guys have questions, please, if I can start to begin to rebuild that trust in my limited role by contacting me directly, and we can go from there. So please know that you're heard, you're valued, and we will have positive discussions moving forward because we're all Spartans. Ms. Hauser.
Thank you. This presentation will have no new information from the presentation that we did last week as the information session. However, we have added some more clarity, so the slides may look a little different. The presentation is the same. So first, for background, and I should mention, we'll also be taking this slowly and going through all the steps of the process. So I apologize to you who this may be a repeat, but we want to make sure that everybody has the same information. So as a background, earlier this winter, we did look at our budget projections as we do every year. And when we looked at those budget projections for the upcoming school year, we have a $2.8 million budget shortfall. That's largely due to the state freezing the funding for K-12, meaning they did not increase or give us any new revenue source. In addition to that, no new revenue. Our costs are expected to go up largely due to inflation and cost of living, which we all have noticed. In addition, the current operating referendum of $750,000 is expiring. So when we looked at this $2.8 million budget shortfall, we had decided as a district that we would try to address it in two ways. One is that we would look at our expenses and find at least $700,000 worth of budget reductions. And then that for the remaining $2.1 million, we would go to operating referendum. We do now have the final election results, which confirmed that the operating referendum failed. Therefore, we as a district will need to reduce the budget for '22, '23, this upcoming school year, by a total of at least $2.8 million. The budget reduction process began with our standard annual budget process. So every year, we look at our budget. This chart shows the main budget categories. And because it's little, I'll read it also. We have salaries and benefits are our staffing plan. We have technology, transportation, curriculum, and then all other expenses. We looked at each of these areas equally and with the same scope and making sure that we were looking at our entire budget. This process did result in some identified savings, but they did not equal $2.8 million. Also this winter, the board appointed a budget reduction committee to then review additional actions for reductions and put them on a menu or a list of items for the board to consider. This is the list that has been referred to tonight and that we will be going off of in this presentation. I do want to point out that this list was not intended to be all-inclusive, nor is it all-inclusive. So it is a starting point for discussion. This chart shows the different areas that the list, the current list addresses. So there could be use of the capital trust fund in blue, ESSER funds in green, the community service levy, Cataract, facilities, transportation, and staffing and benefits. And I'll go through each of these items in more detail. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the first two recommendations that were on the menu have already been completed. The first was to reduce the district's cost on employee health insurance. This is something that we do as part of our standard annual budget process, meaning each year we project our employee benefits. And about every three years, we go out to the marketplace to see what options are available. We did that process this year, and that process resulted in recurring savings of $340,000. When I refer to recurring, what that means is it's not a one-year or a two-year savings, but a savings into the future. The term that we hear a lot is fiscal cliff, meaning a one-year or a two-year savings in the second or the third year, once that savings is gone, we would have a budget shortfall again or a fiscal cliff. The next reduction that has already been done is one of those items that would be a fiscal cliff item, or meaning it's a one-year savings but not a long-term savings. And that is delaying the purchase of new textbooks for elementary students. And this decision was also part of our annual process in that it was so that we could give due diligence to our process for vetting new materials and making sure that we're purchasing the appropriate resource. The rest of these items have not been completed yet, but I will go through them one by one. These again are all thoughts or ideas. No decisions have been made yet. So the next one is to use the Capital Improvement Trust Fund, which is also known as Fund 46, to pay for building maintenance projects over the first two years. So each year, as part of our annual operating budget, we budget approximately $500,000 for maintenance and capital projects on our buildings and grounds. We could use Fund 46 or our capital trust fund in the next two years to pay for some of that budget, should we decide to incur those costs. This would be a fiscal cliff-related item or item that is a short-term solution to the budget. The next option is to defer additional building maintenance costs. So perhaps we delay some projects or extend the useful life of some of our assets even further. This again would be a fiscal cliff item in that it would be just delaying the cost. It would not be avoiding or reducing the cost. Next slide, please. This one we discussed in the committee meeting earlier tonight. It was to replace the high school student technology with the ESSER funding. The committee's recommendation is to the full board that we go through with the ESSER funding for this purchase. So should that pass on April 26th, this item would result in those savings. Next slide, please. Closing the Cataract School, and you can see the savings that would provide in those areas. The $437,000 is not the cost for each year. It would be the savings. The community service levy, which is Fund 80, could be used to pay for the middle school athletics program. And this is per DPI statute. The requirement is that we allow homeschooled and parochial students to participate in our programming, which we already do. What this would do is it would shift the cost from our operating budget to Fund 80, meaning the class would be fully supported by the community service levy and not come out of the operating budget. There would be no reduction to the programming or offerings to our students. The next slide is looking at busing. We could review our busing. The option we originally had does not look to be feasible as we've been working through with Southwest. However, we could task them with reducing a set amount of dollars from our contract, which could mean reducing routes, restructuring routes, that would likely result in longer ride times. The next option on this slide is to suspend the employee retirement contribution for the next two years. That benefit is that all employees receive 15, all eligible employees receive $1,500 per year in their retirement fund. Depending how long that was suspended for, this would likely be a fiscal cliff item. And that cost is roughly $510,000 each year. And then the final items on this slide are on the list, were involving staffing. And both myself and Ms. Bergman will be going into more details on the following slides regarding staffing. So for staff budget reductions, we thought it was important to walk you through the process that came up with this list. So we are going to go step by step, taking you through about January timeframe through today. So first of all, each year, administrative team, being the superintendent, directors, and principals, analyze the number of positions that we have in the district. This is all positions. And we look at what positions we might need for the following year. Some of the things that we look at are our projected enrollment. Are we expecting more students, less students? We look at our preferred class sizes. If we have a preferred class size, for instance, at kindergarten of 17 to 20 students, is that appropriate with is that appropriate with what we're seeing and what we're experiencing in the classroom? Uh, is that appropriate with where some of our peers are? So we do that analysis every year. We look at our student needs and supports. Have we had an increase in certain populations that require more supports? Have we seen test scores that require different supports? Have we had teacher turnover that required different supports? We look at our unfilled positions from the current year and determine are they still a need? That we need to look at refilling them, or can they continue to go unfilled? This process happens every single year, regardless of budgetary shortfalls or surplus. Next slide. So this year, that process coincided with the budget reduction discussions that we've been having. Unfortunately, that blurred the line between the two discussions. So again, we have an annual process we go through every year. And we had a new process this year with identifying budget reductions. These position reductions that came out of our annual process are not all due to the need for budget reductions. Most of them, if not all, are related to our annual process. Step two, directors then meet with principals again to gather their input and what potential adjustments could be made to our staffing plan. We review all needs, both additions and reductions. We review all positions, administrative, middle management, certified and classified. We review all buildings, whether it be elementary, middle or high school, central office, staff who travel between buildings, we review it all. Step three, after having those more detailed discussions with principals and getting feedback, we get together as a director and superintendent team and create an initial staffing plan that includes both additions and reductions. And then we bring that plan back to the principals for feedback. We work together to discuss the impact of the additions and reductions, and we make any necessary adjustments. This year, that process resulted in adding back approximately six positions from the initial thought. The list of changes for next year resulted in a net reduction of positions. This is the first time in eight years that our district has had a net reduction in staff come out of our annual process. On the next slide, there is a graph. The blue line is showing our change in our teacher FTE over the past eight years. You can see that our teacher FTE remained relatively the same as far as a change in FTE over that time. We had a large spike for this current year, which was largely largely related to our additional positions that we paid for with our Esther funding. Looking to next year, this is the first time that we would have a reduction in staffing over the past eight years. The orange line is our change in enrollment. And you can see that for the past four years, we have had a decline in enrollment. The next chart shows the same information, but in a little bit different format. The blue bars are showing our change in teacher FTE over time. And you can see the trend line there. Last year was the first time that we exceeded the trend line, trend line, and this year we're adjusting back down. The orange line going at the bottom is our student count and the change over time. Step four in our process, because the list of positions this year resulted in a net decrease to the staffing plan, this potential savings was incorporated into the budget reduction conversations that were occurring consecutively with our annual process. In hindsight, this annual process of budget reductions maybe shouldn't have been commended commingled with a budget reduction conversation. The process and steps one through three drove the positions on the list, not the need for budgetary reductions. Step five, the board appointed a budget reduction committee to review the list of potential budget reductions, which included changes to the staffing plan. This position reduction list was compared to our natural attrition, meaning staff who are resigning or retiring. When we compared the list of what we needed with the list of attrition or staff who are leaving naturally, we found that there would be no reductions enforced or no layoffs needed. So the reductions that we identified, we had natural attrition to cover 100% of those reductions in positions. The committee created a two-tier list of reductions, and there were position reductions under both tiers. Up to this point, we have only discussed tier one reductions. And that is all we plan on recommending at for as an administrative team. Step six. A team of directors and principals then met with each individual employee who would be directly affected by any of the reductions to the staffing plan. We listened to the concerns and ended up adding back two of the positions that were originally proposed into your one. Step seven, the full menu of budget reductions, including staff positions, was presented to the public. We again acknowledge that the annual process of adjusting the staffing plan maybe should not have been commingled with the budget reduction conversation. So again, we are recommending no further position reductions at this time other than those that came out of our annual process. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bergman.
So all of these positions are up for discussion. So at any time, you can ask questions at the end of the presentation on um your thoughts and concerns. So the positions that we have were based on our best information at the available time. And should our enrollment change or something change, we would come back if our numbers exceed some of our um costs. Next. So the first would be the core teacher at Southside Early Learning Center. Uh, the proposals to reduce one FTE at kindergarten due to the projected enrollment. They changed everything into charts to hopefully help um everyone see the numbers better. So at kindergarten, the preferred class size is 16 to 20 students per class. Projected right now, our average class size will be between 18 and 19 students. At Herman Elementary, there's a proposal of reducing one FTE due to the enrollment. The current grade levels for first grade, preferred class size is 17 to 21, with the projected average class size between 18 and 19. For grade two, preferred class size is between 18 and 22 students per class. Projected right now is between 19 and 20 students per class. Grade three, projected class size is 19 to 20 with the preferred class size between 19 and 23. In grade four, our projected class size is 20 to 21, and our preferred class size range is 20 to 24 students. We had added an interventionist through Esser for Herman. And it was a one-year limited term contract, and we are um looking to reduce that as a one FTE. We will still have intervention support at Herman with four intervention teachers and four educational assistants to help provide interventions for our students. Core teacher at Meadowview Middle School, there's, there is a proposal to reduce one FTE at fifth grade due to enrollment projections. And I have the enrollment projections for both fifth and sixth grade. For fifth grade, preferred class sizes between 20 and 25. Average right now is between 21 and 24. And grade six, projected class, preferred class size is 20 to 25. And right now we're projecting between 20 and 22 students per class. So we also have a reduction, our, our bubble for seventh and eighth grade has moved through. We've add, we've added teachers over the past few years to both seventh and eighth grade. As we were adding those um teachers for seventh and eighth grade, we adjusted the instructional model from a junior high model, which is where everyone kind of goes to different core classes, to a middle school pod system. That structure does need additional staff, and that staff was hired due to our numbers. We also have the edge program at the seventh and eighth grade level. That's for our at-risk students, and we service approximately 20 students from each grade level. We have three core teachers that do have the pod model for that program. And they loop with those students for two years. So there is the benefits uh to the edge program uh with that looping. As we looked at our enrollment declining, we determined we might need to reassess how to effectively meet the needs of all of our students in our traditional classroom with maybe not a special program. Next slide. So I want to talk through that middle school concept versus junior high model. The middle school pod system, a group of students rotates to the same three or four teachers for their core classes. This does allow for stronger relationships between teachers and students. Scheduling interventions can be more effective and efficient. Planning and co-planning together. And it does ease that transition from the elementary one teacher to the high school model where they're going to many different core teachers. The junior high model again, students go to random core teachers throughout the day, which makes it a little more difficult to collaborate when you have some um discussing students' needs amongst all of our teachers. Just some more facts, in 1920, we moved sixth grade to the pod system, where there was the three core teachers assigned to the same group of students. Again, same um benefits as I just talked about. When we made this change in 2019, 2020, the edge program at that time had serviced sixth, seventh and eighth grade traditionally. And we moved that to no longer offer at sixth grade and was, became only a seventh and eighth grade program at that time. Next slide. In the 2021 school year, seventh and eighth grade switched to that pod system as we added those teachers. So now we do have that middle school concept through our sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And due to COVID, we didn't want to change any instructional model with our edge program. And so we continued seventh and eighth grade as it was. So you do have some options, and I wanted to make those options clear. Oh, to implement the pod system, we do require more core staff positions. Um, we, those larger class sizes have moved out of the high school. So we do have lower class sizes projected for both grades seven and eight. So we might need to reassess on how we meet the needs of all of our students. So we do have some options available to you on the next slide. And I did put this in board docs. But I just wanted you to make sure that you understood that the number in each classroom um per scenario. So the preferred class size in seventh and eighth grade are between 20 and 25 students in those core classes. At the edge, the preferred class size was between 13 and 14 students. Scenario one, we don't make any changes, and we keep all of our current staff in the seventh and eighth grade. And there are the projected numbers per um core classroom. Scenario two is reducing the three edge teachers who would have positions in our district. And there would be our projected numbers in our classrooms for seventh and eighth grade. Scenario three, phase out and support those 23 seventh graders who are going to be eighth graders by possibly reducing one of the edge teachers. So we have 11 to 12 teachers to support those eighth graders. Or scenario four is reducing three core teachers at the seventh, eighth grade level and not change anything to edge. That would make us go back to that junior high instructional model. And I have the um data on how many kids per classroom there would be there. The LMC director at the middle school, we've had one LMC director position vacant in the, the school year. And one LMC director has been running both LMCs. Though it's been a challenge, she has stepped up to the plate and have been able to service our students. We met with the LMC director and the only way to continue supporting our students at the high level that she can, she needs two secretaries to continue to keep both libraries open all day long. And we do support that as a district. The German teacher, it's currently going to be vacant next year due to a teacher transferring to a different position. At this time, the high school does not need more support um in, because of enrollment numbers. However, German and Spanish will still be offered at high school. However, only Spanish would be offered at the middle school at the eighth grade level. So to continue German at the middle school, the district would need to hire a point to a point two-five German teacher to support those middle school students, which is something we could consider if you'd like. Secretary one at Herman, this position focuses mainly primarily making copies for the building. Um, we will not have that big copier anymore, and we are going to now have copy centers in each of the uh areas. This position was also provided additional support because of COVID. Um, so at this time, we believe we can reduce that secretary one position. And then currently, there are two educational assistants at the high school that support the study hall classes. Um, the high school teacher prep time is being restructured for next year, providing availability of teachers to cover supervision as a part of their contracted day. So to summarize the possible reductions that you can choose, here is the full list. And then just a quick summary, um, I think Leo is going to take the quick summary.
So I've had some questions about timeframe reminder that we don't approve our original budget until October. So by October, we would need confirmation of the board's intent as far as a bit uh having a balanced budget. However, we do have a few key decisions that we would need as soon as possible. So waiting till October would not be feasible. Those are staffing, uh particularly our certified staffing. We have statutory deadlines of May 15th to have contracts out. Transportation, it's a lot of work to reroute if that is what was requested. And uh ideally, the transportation company would be able to begin working on routes so that once school gets out, they can begin testing them right away. And then the third piece is technology. With the supply chain shortages, there are several month delays in ordering. And so to have devices ready for the first day of school in the fall, that would be the third most critical decision at this time. With that, we can take any questions if there's any questions with the board.
Would you please go back to the slide that had the middle school reductions? My question has to do with uh the comparison of scenario two and scenario three. It appears to me that with scenario two, we're talking about three positions.
So the proposal was to, to reduce three based on enrollment for seventh and eighth grade. So scenario two reduces the three FTEs through reducing the edge program. Scenario two, three is if the board didn't want to um reduce three positions uh next year and wanted to look at supporting the 23 students that are current seventh graders in the edge program into eighth grade and continue edge for just eighth graders next year. We couldn't just do it with one teacher. There's um too many things I believe that we could possibly um do that with two FTE teachers. But um to support just the eighth graders.
I understand now. I was confused by the reduction in the I understand now. I was confused by the reduction in the class sizes for eighth grade going down to 18 to 20, but that makes sense to me now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. It was mentioned earlier that there is the potential once this year is done, the surplus of funds that have not yet been allocated. Is there any way, shape or form that we can move these to this operating budget to make them work?
Yes. So the way that would look is we wouldn't spend the money this year, which then does have a negative impact on our state aid for next year. So we have to spend the money by June 30th to get that 70% approximate reimbursement next year. So that would be the, the biggest negative to doing that. So how that would look is we would end our year with, and I don't even know exactly how we're shaking out yet, but under the assumption that we have surplus money, what would happen is we would end the year with larger revenues than expenses, which in essence builds our fund balance or our. And so if that fund balance builds, the board could decide that they would use part of that fund balance to offset the budget shortfall next year. There is a downfall to that. So in addition, in addition to the hit on state aid, if we were ever to go for debt in the future, whether it be through, you know, a facility referendum or what have you, using fund balance for operations does negatively impact your bond rating, which then increases your interest typically. So it is an option, but one that we would want to consider pretty carefully.
Okay, so if we were to decide to go with that option and I don't know, I, I feel that the district has a pretty good grasp of prepaying down debt. Would, could that play into that decision if by chance we were to move it into the fund 40, into the, the operating budget and use it that way? And if we do go for that referendum or whatever, I know it's totally a hypothetical maybe, but just as a thought process.
I understand the process. I would not feel comfortable answering that without talking to Baird and our, our bond council to talk about what the potential ramifications of that. Okay.
Leah, do you have a, and again, I'm not asking for any specific number, but in just an estimate, if there were extra funds, how much that would be? I mean, just a rough estimate.
Um, I would say typically.
We are not holding you to this, so.
Between 500,000 and 1.5 million.
Okay, thank you.
So Howser, is Fund 46 an option? Is Fund 46 an option to transfer any surplus of, from the 21, 22 budget to Fund 46 and still get state aided?
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. So something that we've done over the past six years, which is what has built our capital trust or our Fund 46 account to help with that memorial field project, is at the end of each year, when we have surplus funds, we put them into Fund 46. Then we do get the state aid. They are in an essence of savings account. They can be used in the future. The catch is that they can only be used for capital improvements. So access funds this year, assuming we have some, if we wanted to put them into Fund 46, they could offset some costs next year, but it could only be costs that come off of our long-range capital project plan.
So if we were to take that option, then for instance, the, the Southside project, that money could come from that fund.
You got it. Yep.
Uh, real quick, I know we're bouncing around here, but when we look at cataract school, what is the, what's the student to teacher ratio, the average? Do we know going K through four?
Um, I can tell you, uh, per this year's January pupil count, what we were at.
Great.
In pre-kindergarten, 11. In kindergarten, nine. In first grade, 11. In second grade, 12. In third grade, 15. And in fourth grade, 10. And one of those is a split class.
Which I want to make sure that we highlight that the second and third grade classes are combined. And we have one teacher that has a very large class size at this time.
Okay, so then my next question is in, in ways that we can keep everything that we want to keep, right? And which includes cataract. Is there a way to look at the, the staff reduction, not in the teacher realm, but in the, the middle management realm? Is that something that we can look at, that we can talk about and what that could look like in, in all of this?
That's actually what that was. That's, that's the annual, there is no reduction enforced. That's.
Right. I, I, I understand that part. I, I totally understand that part. But if, do we, do we have projected numbers for student counts for next year? Because we, it was just stated that seventh and eighth grade, we could, you know, take a teacher out depending on where we're at. For next year. Okay.
Yeah, so.
So, so we calculate our projected enrollment a couple of different ways. One would just be to roll each grade forward. However, that's not always completely accurate. So like, for instance, at ninth grade, we typically have a larger increase because our parochial schools roll in. Fort McCoy typically, those students come to us really at the middle school age versus like starting out at kindergarten. And so we have a calculation that we do that kind of accounts for all of those anomalies that we have in our district. The third thing that we do is we contact with UW Madison through their applied population lab to have a study done to also confirm the estimates we're using. So all of our projected enrollments was looking at all three of those indicators as an administrative team and looking at where we thought we would fall.
Okay.
And those are the projections that were used for those class sizes for next year.
So if I'm looking at this correctly, we're looking at around 13.6 student to teacher ratio in, in cataract. So looking at where we are with the referendum. I, based on a number of conversations and emails that we've had throughout the community and emails that have come to us as a board, I think there was a strong misunderstanding of what this referendum was about. And I think that people assumed it was additional taxes as compared to transferring funds that we already have.
Tony, we're, we're not going to get into that.
Okay, that's fine. Yep. The, so what I'm wondering is, in this scenario, finding what's going to have the least impact on our students at this given time. There's an opportunity one more time this year to go for referendum if we choose to. I don't see cataract or the reduction of the edge program as two strong viable options right now. Because we have students in the district that need us at the seventh and eighth grade level. And I understand the student to teacher ratios isn't exactly where we want it. But that's, there's probably a good reason for that because we have students that need that support. And so to have a smaller student to teacher ratio makes sense to me in that given situation. Cataract, we're we are directly affecting the students and staff right now out of the gate. And I think, again, based on conversations, an opportunity in the near future may resolve that scenario. All of the other positions, I, I, I want to hear what the board is thinking, but those are, those are my feelings as of right now based on those two topics.
Sam, did you put the agenda together?
So I did.
Okay, was the item A, was that to lead into the next two items?
Yes, it was. It was just to have an overall budget discussion. And then for A, and then B, if the board chose to discuss further any, in possible action for non-staff budget reductions as presented or add new ones or anything like that. So it was discussion first as a whole. And then if the board wished to act on non-staff budget reductions first. And then if the board wished to act on staff reductions.
I, I apologize for deviating from that, Mr. Asmussen. I'm sorry about that. Yeah.
I don't think it devi, it's all part of the discussion because it's as a whole. Because the next discussion item for B, if we get that, would be no, no discussion on staff. Because that's not the agenda item. So right now, the board is open to discuss any budget item that they wish. And that was kind of the, the purpose behind it, just to have a holistic approach. And then narrow it down, knowing with the information that we have and we can go into further discussion as well.
All right, so let's, can I, can I, so let's move into item B.
Can I ask another question quick?
Sure.
Ms. Howser, can you go over again the Fund 10 that we have left? And right, I know we have board policy of how much we need to try to keep in that fund. And just explain that again on, on when we might dip into that and how that might impact. Right? I know you talked about the state aid piece and how that could impact long-term. Can you go over that again?
So you're referring to our fund balance, which is, it changes daily, so it's a snapshot in time. And if you're familiar with financial statements that aren't related to a governmental entity, that would be like your retained earnings or your equity. So fund balance, it does not equal cash. So the balance and fund balance is not equivalent to like a savings account. But it does show our financial house. Excuse me. So our fund balance per board policy is required to be at 15%. For the past many years, we've been between 19 and 21%. And I'm projecting at the end of this year, we'll be right at about 20%. 20% has seemed to be the sweet spot where we don't have to short-term cash flow borrow. So school district financed, we really have two main revenue streams. They make up 80% of our budget. That's the tax levy and state aid. The tax levy comes to us in three chunks throughout the year and the state aid comes to us, I believe, in four chunks. And so with payroll being the largest percentage of our budget, payroll happens every other week. But our income doesn't come in every other week. So that fund balance is important to make sure that we have the cash flow to be able to pay our bills and pay our payroll. And so although board policy is at 15%, we, for the past many years have kept right around 20 and that has seemed to be sufficient. Can we use that fund balance? We can. In addition to the comments that I gave to Ms. Presswood.
Where are we going with this?
Colin had asked for an explanation of Fund 10 and the fund balance and if it's.
How does it tie into the budget reduction?
He's asking whether or not that's money is available to help solve this solution. And he is explaining why it's a good and bad idea.
She's getting there.
So in addition to the state aid piece, in addition to affecting our bond rating, one other thing would be that we could potentially have to cash flow borrow to meet our bills in between those cashier seats of our tax levy and state aid.
So you said we sit between 19 and 21% and we're right about 20 is our sweet spot? What is that number? If we, if we were to.
20% of our, yup, it's 20% of our operating budget. So as our operating budget changes, that number changes, but roughly 7 million.
7 million. Okay. That's the, that's the balance total or that's the 5% that we could potentially use?
That would be the total balance between 7 and 8 million.
Okay.
So Mr. Asmussen, in order to move this discussion along and getting to item B and dealing with non-personnel items, I would move consideration of the use of Fund 46 at the amount of 400,000. The community service levy for the 91,000. The technology purchase for the high school. And I'm, I'm, I'm trusting that that's closer to 125,000 because if it's 500,000 over three years or whatever. And then if you combine that with the textbooks that we've discussed and the insurance savings, I think that brings us to about a million dollars to, to get things started.
Mr. Hendricks, as far as the technology devices, we, I know we discussed a little bit for the staffing and I know there's a little, the staffing technology updates. I know there's a little discussion that needs to take place with our directors as to whether we can use SRR funds for that. But would you be open to adding that as well to? I'm trying to remember exactly what the amount was. I think, Mr. Stearman, you said it was around 80,000 in year one, 60,000 year two, correct? Approximately? Okay, thank you, Ms. Howser. Would you be open to adding that as well?
If, if that's allowable.
Because doing one, one thing at a time or you, you buy, you, you combine in.
I'm putting all this together and taking care of all three items at one time, yes. Unless there's objections. I'm just going to need you to say it again. Start again. Oh, yeah. So what I'm proposing is the use of Fund 46 at $400,000 a year for capital projects.
For two years.
Potentially for each of the next two years, though I think we're just planning next year's budget, right? I mean, there's, there's no reason to make decisions about two years down the line. The community service fund for the middle school co-curriculars for savings of 91,000 approximately. And the use of SRR funds for the technology replacements for approximate savings of 125,000.
Give you the updated figure. It's 185,000.
100 and what?
85.
185 for each of those years?
Yup.
I like that.
Even better.
Yeah. Am I, what, why I say that is then when you combine all of those together, we're talking about, well, over a million dollars then in savings to get us started.
You've got the 100,000 in textbooks too, correct?
Yes. Oh, because we've already approved the textbooks at 100 to 150,000 and the insurance savings at 340,000. So that brings us currently to over a million. Was the insurance savings. Insurance premiums, savings. The other one was textbooks, which is an estimate of 100 to 150,000.
Is that, is a textbook something we could use SRR funds for?
What I think the proposal is to delay it, delay the purchase one year. And in the, in the coming year, just to do a more in-depth study of our textbook needs. I'm sorry?
The answer is yes. That's the intent is that we will delay it so we can have, get the appropriate, looking at the appropriate math series and then we would look at using the SRR funds in the following year to offset that cost for the textbooks.
Okay, I thought when this the original reductions came out, I don't know, two or three weeks ago. That that was one of the things that was going to get cut.
It was one of the things in our, our long-range plan for my, for the resources. Our elementary teachers were not ready to look at a new math series this year with all of the things that were going on. Because I did ask them, they said, we are not ready to pilot any math series. We need to wait till next year. They are eager now. I already had to reach out to me saying, I'd love to pilot next year. So we're going to go through the process next year to make sure we're picking the appropriate resource for our elementary students. Then we have to bring it to the board for final approval. And then we're going to look at using the SRR funds to get. And then we're going to look at using the S R funds to getting, to, to be able to purchase those materials.
So how that relates to budget savings is when we look at our total spend this year on curriculum and instruction. Our total spend next year will be less because of what Ms. Brigham and just described. So we're delaying that purchase and we're not backfilling it with something else. So this upcoming school year, our total spend on curriculum and instruction will be 100 to 150,000 less. And then when we go to purchase that resource the following year, the intent is we would use S R funds. So in essence, it's a reduction in the total budget per curriculum and instruction.
For the sake of moving things along, I'll second Mr. Hendrix's motion.
You speak up, Josh.
Yeah, sorry. For the sake of moving things along, I'll second Mr. Hendrix's motion.
The motion.
All right. What else is in? Non-staff budgeting.
It's in the slides. However, I'd recommend that we stay on the motion. And Mr. Hendricks made and Mr. Lighten seconded.
How do you, how are you classifying cataract?
That's not part of the motion.
That's not in the motion, but to answer your question, that is a non-staff. Reduction.
I'm sorry, did you just say that that is a non-staff reduction?
That's how we would consider it in the agenda item.
Okay.
When are we going to address cataract?
My, when my, whenever you're doing this is to get rid of the easy stuff first and then we could delve into the harder stuff.
Okay. Do we have a list of everything that we're going to be talking about?
Well, we have a list of recommendations.
Okay.
They, that was what was brought before us here tonight.
Okay.
So I'm not suggesting that we ignore the other issues, but let's take care of the easy ones, see what we've got left to cut and then. Deal with those.
All right, so.
Could you repeat your, your motion then, John?
That's what I was, yeah, gonna ask too.
Sure. So I would move to accept the use of Fund 46. For capital projects, saving $400,000, taking the middle school activities from community service. Funds, saving 91,000. And using S R funds. For the technology, high secondary technology purchases. Saving approximately 185,000 dollars.
Go ahead.
You know, when I, when I first came on the board. I found it very interesting that budget, something as important as this. Was predetermined before I got on board and then. I, I received a lot of questions that I didn't have answers to. I would, I would ask the board to consider. Not doing any action tonight. Because based on what we have heard on public input. And answers not being given out, confusion of. Mr. Hendricks went ahead and tried to explain to the cataract folks. And there was a lot of misunderstanding that was done in that. I think there's a lot of loose ends. I think the public voted for the four people to replace the seats. One of them's mine. We have two of the members that have been coming to them, Pat McKenna and Mr. Wells, who is going to take their seat. And work this thing out. I think that it would only behoove us as professional courtesy to those two individuals. To wait on making a decision on this until the end of the month. I mean, right now, the committee is, is suggested. This tier one, tier two, and now we're going back and it's got so doggone confusing to people that it was put out. And these, and cataract was put on the table, staffing was put on the table. Three months ago, if we were going to go for a referendum, we had better have answers to where the money is going to be spent. And now you're just undoing everything that the committee just suggested to do. I think it's, it's ridiculous myself. We need to go back to the drawing board and take care of it. And the two members that were voted in by the public should be able to have a voice in the, in the issue. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. To, for 400 for Fund 40, well, you just had it. We have a second.
Josh Lighten has already seconded the motion. Mr. Lighten has seconded.
As any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, you guys.
So I'd like to, Mr. Rasmussen, if it's okay, you mentioned what else is on the non-staff list? So. Part of the non-staff list is mostly what Ms. Howser discussed earlier, but we put it on the slides again. The, the capital improvement, if you can go to slide 81. Back one.
Chris, you go back one.
Yep. Thank you. And these are non-staff and as reiterated already, this is already done. The health insurance and the new textbook.
Chris, next slide please.
And we just. Put the, if I understand the, the motion, we did the first one on the agenda or on the, the slide there. So that one has been done. The next option that was brought forth as a, as a potential savings is the deferring of the maintenance. Okay, that would be a non-staff one. Next slide please. And then we have the replacement of the student technology with S R. That has been done. Actually, it's been submitted to the full board on the 26th. No, 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 but earlier, the purchase of the funds that are going to come through S R. But we're actually going to be approving the devices on the 26th. Right? So that one, I'm not going to say done, but it's done approving pending board approval at the end of the month. Next slide please. Cataract School, we put on the non-staff because. If Cataract would close, those certified staff would come and be, no one would lose their job. As Ms. Brigham and said and Ms. Howser said, no one is going to lose their job, certified staff. With the closing of Cataract School. Okay, that budget savings will be there. Okay. And then the use of the community service fund for activities. That has been talked to about already. Next slide please. Eliminate the bus routes. We have not discussed those yet. And the suspension of the retirement contribution. Next slide. And the staffing positions is next one, and we haven't talked about volunteers with the reduction.
Mr. Rasmussen, with that just noted, can we go back to the one that we haven't touched on? And let's go through these and let's see if we can make decisions or if we want to defer a decision. I, I.
Let, we're going to start with Cataract, these people.
Sure.
All night. Yeah. So. Let's open, we need a motion to. Discuss an action on, and act on Cataract School.
So moved?
I'm asking for a motion.
I just, I didn't want to have to repeat it. So I move that we discuss and take possible action in regards to Cataract Elementary School.
There's a recommendation.
I think what James is asking Heidi is that a recommendation is made either to close or to keep open.
Josh, could you say that a little bit louder, please?
Sorry, I, I think what James is asking is that either the school is, we make a motion. That either we table this discussion on Cataract, we vote to leave it open, or we vote to close it.
So what he's saying is we need an actionable motion. So either a motion to. Accept the recommendation to close Cataract. Or not, not just to discuss it.
Oh, okay. Ah, well then I make the motion to keep Cataract Elementary School open and we look at other options.
I have a second. We're open for discussion.
I think there are plenty of other, there's the differ maintenance. Thing we talked about eliminating a couple of those bus routes, taking away that I hate to say it, but the kindergarten door to door service. And Southwest finding other route efficiencies. I, I feel that. The VTS had said, and I know the Sprags, they live out on the county line. We close Cataract, those kids that live on the Jackson Monroe County line, they're going to choose Black River, they're going to choose Melrose. And then we're going to look at more declining numbers. My kids are Cataract kids. My junior is an AP student. Okay. My sixth grader, my fifth grader could potentially skip and go to seventh grade. They're Cataract kids. Their kindergarten teacher is sitting out there. I am not for this. When we started the Herman discussions, I went to those meetings. That was my first interaction with Mr. Hendricks. I sat there and listened to those meetings and, and my questions were always went back to Cataract. We're, we're not closing that school. Over, over my body, we're not closing that school. I will fight for it. These people are here, they've been here regularly, the last umpteen, you know, since we first announced this and there's heart and there's passion. You know, as we brought the 4H club back to Cataract, we had open gyms at Cataract in the wintertime to give those kids something to do during the winter, especially during breaks. You know, we, there's so much that goes on in that, that community. I'm sorry, I don't live there anymore, but. I'm, I'm sure many of you aren't even aware of the things that this community does. They pull together when they need to. They're chicken queue. Oh, my gosh, if you've never been to that, I highly recommend it, okay? The kids look forward to this event every year. And I, I will tell you that people that meet my children for the first time. Your kids are so polite, they're so nice, they're so sweet. Where did they get their manners from? And I have to give credit because everything they learn, they learn in kindergarten. This teacher that's sitting right here, she, when my kids didn't get on the bus or something didn't happen, she was there with them. She made sure that they made it. These teachers care about our kids and their, our families. Sorry, I'm going to be the emotional mom now because that's what I am. I don't know, as a, as a board member and sitting here and, and feeling the heart of these parents and, and. Ms. Abby, her and my kid are, are friends. They've been friends. My oldest, he has his best friend is a Cataract kid. They started in kindergarten together and they're still friends to this day. They're going on the Spain trip in summer together. Like you develop these relationships with these smaller class sizes that. I'm sure they get it at the other schools, but I don't know. I just know Cataract and. I'm not, I'm not from Sparta, I'm not from Wisconsin, but Cataract made me feel like I had a home. And I'm super appreciative of all the things that I helped do in that school and what these people are doing out there now. And, and to put these kids on buses that are out on the county line all the way to Southside or all the way to Herman. It's not fair to them and we're supposed to be looking out for the best interest of our kids. And our teachers and our friends and our parents and our community members. And it, it kills me that this is even a consideration. And, and like I said, there are other things, we can go back, let's defer the maintenance, let's, let's look at the eliminate, you know, some of those bus routes that we talked about and. The, the suspension of benefits and if these teachers that are retiring, if they have as much invested in, into the school district, I think they would be okay with that. Just to keep the school open. So that's all I have to say.
I'll hit, I'll comment on, on your comment. I, I feel the same way with that. Meeting at the Cataract School and Colin, you were there along with Mr. Hendricks. And what we heard is, is something our goal and objective as a board is to go ahead and make sure that. All students are, are treated equally. State statutes dictate that to us. Yes, we have a budget that we have to work with. And I guess my question is, is a cost savings that this committee decided that, you know, that's the way to go. Is there consideration of the maintenance of the building that has to continue so it doesn't get dilapidated? There's mowing a grass, there's making sure that that building is kept up to standards. If the school district decides to close it and then what is the plans? Are you going to sell the building? Are you going to sell it to the community? You know, there's so many open-ended things on this whole. Plan of, of reducing the, the, the dollar amounts with no answers to it. I mean. The, the, when, when the gentleman says you've got a thousand. Some signatures plus, you know, to keep the school open. My God, you know, somebody better be listening to it. You know, it's important, it's important to it, you know? I mean, has their figures been made that, you know, the education that is given to Cataract, does that supersede what education is being given at the Herman? I mean, the gentleman over here said that, you know, we're not performing, you know? The school is, the grades and, and DPI scores and everything are down. What are the DPI scores at Cataract? Are they higher than what we have in, in, at our other buildings? I mean, those are considerations, you know? I feel for Heidi, you know, she's got kids on there and, and as I made my comment when I was at Cataract. You know, I don't care whether they're Cataract students, Angelo students or Sparta students. They're all the same. I classify them and I take this to heart, that they're my kids. I don't have kids in, in the school district, but by God, when I got hired for this job here. They're my kids. And you know, for the term that I've, I've spent, I've gone ahead and put that forth. With the best decision, with the information that we've gotten. And that is what I wish the board would consider on this, that everything is considered. That's all I got.
So in our, our report, Leah gave an update with a couple of considerations in regard to changing bell times, which would help. Change the bussing to Meadowview. And she also talked about, like I said, that kindergarten door to door service that we could eliminate and.
I believe there's a motion. We have a motion on Cataract, Ms. Presswood. I would recommend staying on that for now.
Thank you.
So my concern is dealing with this issue before we have figured out. How we're going to solve the budget problem. We could say, you know, it's estimated $400,000 by closing Cataract. We don't do that. Is, is that going to translate into $400,000 of staffing cuts?
A consideration that was not concluded by actual facts.
What facts were not? What are you talking about, Ed?
Mr. Asmussen.
We need to get back on the Cataract.
Mr. Asmussen. I was also a member on the committee and Ms. Hauser. We came to a, a very defined number, right? $437,915 as a net loss for Cataract Elementary School. Could you elaborate a little bit on how we came to that number, please? Thank you.
The first part is technology. So, and this is with any school in our district. So we have again those major buckets of costs, which are your technology, your transportation, your curriculum resources and the staffing required to operate the building. There's other costs in our district such as the utilities that go with the building. So there's costs that go with the building and costs that go with the students. And so when we looked at Cataract, any of the costs that would go with the students, we assumed would still continue. So if we think of the iPad that the kid, you know, the student holds in their hand, that would follow them whatever school they're in. So going back to our big buckets, when we look at technology, we have to pay a special internet service to get internet up to Cataract each month. So we would save on that service. We have devices that are unique to that building such as the copy machine contract or the technology costs for operating a controlled entrance at that building, whether it be the badging system or secretarial custodial nutrition service, computers and those things that are the services that are needed to operate a building. When we look at buildings and grounds, we spend approximately $30,000 each year on maintenance and supplies. So that would be custodial supplies, any of the routine maintenance to keep that building operating. Another $15,000 a year on utilities. And then some of the costs are harder to pinpoint, but things like our inter-office mail delivery or delivering meals. So we have staff who aren't maybe necessarily directly coded to Cataract, but that travel from in the city limits out to Cataract to do some of those deliveries daily. For nutrition, it's the cost to maintain an additional kitchen, not necessarily the cost of the food or the supplies. Transportation, there would likely still be routes, just as we have now that run just in the Cataract area. So as far as the savings on transportation in the morning or the afternoon, that probably would not be the case. However, we may be able to do something different with our midday route for our pre-K program. And Southwest would work on that to look at those ride times. We also run the win after school program at Cataract and that comes with a cost as well. And then as far as staffing positions, again, this is not for people. We would find places within the district for the people. But we likely wouldn't need the additional positions due to, again, our ratios, like what we talked about earlier. The, these are all of the annual costs. What's not on here is any cost of long range maintenance or technology. So things that occur every now and then, these are just the annual costs.
Thank you very much. So given this information, there's a lot to unpack, just like you said, Mr. Lukasik and Leah. So I would, I would move to recall the motion and not make a decision tonight for a couple of reasons. I, we need to have a workshop, I feel. I feel we should have a workshop where the board is present and can ask questions along with our community. It gives us an opportunity to have the new board members in place and to be a part of this process. And it delays, I, people want an answer yes or no, but it, it delays it. It's not a yes or no as of right now. Because I think there needs to be more discussion per what Mr. Lukasik has stated. So I would move to recall the motion and not make a decision tonight.
So you made the motion and who seconded it?
Motion and there's a second.
Okay, so I don't think that you can recall it. The only way to recall that motion is if you withdraw it or if we just vote it down and then it goes away.
That's okay. All right, then I move that I will recall my previous motion. Now you go.
Okay, so the Cataract question will be put on the full board meeting at the end of the month.
And Mr. Asmussen, would, would we need to make a motion to set up a workshop? Or is that, is that not necessary? I, I just want to make sure I'm doing it correctly.
Well, let's do it.
Make a motion.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we set a date with the full board and community input on discussions of the Cataract Elementary School.
Second.
Is that sufficient?
How many people do you want in there?
I want as many as want to come, honestly. I, I don't want to limit it. Because it's that important.
Can we do it in Cataract?
I'm sorry.
Can we do it in Cataract?
Wow, I don't want to tip the scales or anything. No, I, I'm.
In the, in the gun, the gun club is that big event hall deal.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking we could convene back here in the cafeteria. Plenty of room here.
We have, well, there's a couple of things. If we go to an exterior or another place, if you don't want it streamed. You want it streamed, you don't want it streamed.
We are, we are preaching transparency and I want to preach that. And so I think however we can get the word out is, is okay.
And I guess we, you know, I would propose, you know, we have a board workshop on Monday already, Old School Finance that we're planning. I would propose a, if, to give us time and to get some information to make sure that we're on the same page, I propose a Wednesday, the 20th. Yes, six o'clock. Board workshop.
Does that work for our members of the board? It works for me. I would be okay with that.
When are the new members?
The new members are officially in on the 26th. However, since it's a workshop, it's, it's, it's open discussion and that sort of thing. I would recommend having some ground rules and stuff like that. But it's not public input necessarily. It is a, a more of an open discussion, but we'd probably have to frame it. You know, a lot of our board workshops, I haven't attended a lot of them. But I, I'm guessing that the school finance one on Monday probably won't be as well as attended as the one on Wednesday.
Into our new members in the
What's that?
You'll have Wendy post that.
Wendy, we will, we will take care of the posting and everything and, and do everything, but if that's okay. We would plan on that and then we would move forward with any questions or anything like that. And do our best to set that up.
The, the number one reason I'm doing this is I, I think we need the new members in place. We need to get, be educated. And do our due diligence with this, make sure we're making the proper decisions.
I would, I would suggest that we find some, but I know a lot of money is going to be put into that school. And have somebody that can speak to the air conditioning, you know, the condition of the building. Yeah, I think that's important as well.
That sounds great.
So those sorts of things, please send us topics. You know, cost of maintenance, you know, Ms. Hauser said some things, but anything specific that you want for Cataract, we'll try our best to get you the information.
I know, since I've been on the board, we've done a parking lot, air conditioning, fencing.
There's a lot.
All right.
Do you, so you had a motion, did you second that, Mr. Lukasik?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that? We need action?
Well, we do have a motion in a second to conduct a board workshop. I added the date, but.
All in favor?
I.
I. So I guess the next question, is there anything else on the non-staff menu that the board would like to discuss or take action on?
I know the busing hasn't been talked about yet.
That is correct.
Okay, Mr. Asmussen. From a busing standpoint, Ms. Hauser, you had very good reasons why we would not do that now. Can you refer to those, please?
Yes, um, so in the board update from this weekend. Let's see if I can recall them all. So I talked with Derek Backsucker, the owner of Southwest last week. And the original thought was we could bring back the Meadowview transfer to save two to three routes. Some hinge points with that are, first of all, we've set our bell times for next year. And our school calendar for next year is also, so bell times in the school calendar all work together to make sure we need our DPI required minutes of instruction. Those bell times do not accommodate having one joint transfer for all of our school buildings. So for instance, Southside gets out 40 or 45 minutes earlier than Meadowview. That would mean those students are sitting on a bus for that length of time behind the Meadowview School, waiting for those kids to come out. So that was our initial thought when we put this item on the list and that thought really isn't feasible without doing some pretty drastic changes to our scheduling for next year. That being said, during the course of this school year, Southwest has been able to reduce one route just from looking at efficiencies and watching the way they're outs run and so on. So we have, we are running one less route today than we were at the start of the school year. They do foresee that we would be able to continue that reduction into next year. Some other things they can look at for our consideration is combining Southside and Herman students into one route. So in essence, it would kind of be cutting the difference from our current route structure versus our grand Meadowview transfer and really dividing our district into two territories or two sections, I guess. So all the Southside and Herman kids would ride together and then all the other schools. So Meadowview High School, Montessori and parochial would ride together. It is unclear as to how many routes that would save at the moment, if any. But that would be an action that they could look at. So the downfall of the Meadowview transfer as well is if we were to lengthen Southside's bell times to accommodate that Meadowview transfer, it would mean spacing out the AM and AM end time and PM start time. So basically your pre-K kiddos. And right now with those bell times being closer together, we can double run some of those midday routes. So any savings you would get from bringing a Meadowview transfer, you would lose that in the pre-K program with the midday. So this one may be a little more challenging to find budget reductions without some pretty grand other things happening, particularly, particularly with our bell times, which then would affect our school calendar.
And what about, I'm sorry, can you just touch base quickly on the, the Wednesday, the four routes on Wednesdays?
Oh, yep, thank you. So we have a one hour earlier bell time every Wednesday for our PLCs. And we definitely have found a ton of value in that and that's not the question to maintain that bell time. What the question would be is we did not ask our parochial schools to change their bell times to reflect ours. And we could have, we didn't. And instead we basically are picking up the cost of running an additional four routes every Wednesday for our parochial schools. So what we could do is ask the parochial schools to either change their bell times to reflect our district bell times. Or if they don't care to do that, that they would pick up the cost of those four routes.
Right, which is approximately $35,000.
Just a note, at 6:00 AM, I put on my Mr. Bus Driver cap. And I pick up K through four. And I know one of the things was, and I'll be gone, so that's why I'm saying this, but if you expect these little kindergartners to get down to the corner, the bus company is going to be in trouble. They have a hard time getting from the door to the bus. And if there's snow or ice that they can stop and play in, that takes precedent. So it, just keep that in mind.
So is this something that we can look at removing from the list then? If that's
Well, it was on there to
Yeah, can we go back?
To stop door to door kindergarten.
Sure, so I'm just saying, can we?
I'm sorry, one more thing and Mr. Asmussen's comment. If we change the kindergarten door to door, that could impact bus times as well. So again, a lot of, really any of our budgetary discussions that we discussed across the board tonight, we just want to make sure we understand the ripple effect of all of it. So yeah, busing is, might be a little bit more complicated than was originally.
Are we done with the non-staff?
I feel like there was one prior to this, Mr. Rest was the maintenance defer.
Yes.
Yes. Go back, please.
One more.
Keep going.
Once again, this is not the end all be all list. It's not exhaustive. So just keep that in mind too. That was just the, the last one I believe the board would maybe want to discuss or take action or not.
I think one of the things that, that confused me a little bit is this, is that transportation got kind of wrapped in with closing a Cataract. And that because closing Cataract, we got to do this bus route. What I'm hearing tonight is, is that those bus routes is for the whole district and not just because of the consideration of closing Cataract, correct?
Yeah, two separate conversations. So there's
We need to tighten this up.
Two different conversations. One, we change, Cataract stays, Cataract, I mean, let's assume they stay as is. We could still change transportation to reduce the cost for transportation. If we look to close Cataract, there is potentially a transportation impact solely for the midday route at Cataract. So just like Cataract has staffing and technology and things as part of that decision, it also has a transportation impact. So they're two separate conversations.
You answered it.
Thank you.
Rolled up there, James.
All right. Are we taking action on one of these?
Well, I was going to ask if, if one of our directors or all of them could elaborate on the defer additional building maintenance projects. And how we come to a hundred thousand dollar savings each year, please.
So we budget approximately half a million dollars each year for capital projects. We just had a motion that 400,000 of that would come out of Fund 46. That still leaves 100,000 that would come out of the operating budget. So we could just say we're only going to spend $400,000 next year on capital improvements versus our typical 500,000. What that would do is we already have $500,000 worth of projects planned for next year. One of those being the Southside rough, that kind of, if we decide not to do that, that really takes care of this item for the most part.
The, the, the problem with that one is that that's, let's say we just even do it for one year. At the end of that one year, not only do we have a $500,000 hole in the budget, but it would be a $600, $600,000 hole because we've, we've deferred $100,000 worth of projects and pushed them into the next year. And, and so we've created an even bigger budget hole. So that's a, that's a tough one. And that's why I didn't include it in my original motion.
So are, Mr. Hendricks, are you saying maybe this is another one that we drop? So that we don't end up in a $600,000 hole.
I, I certainly wouldn't be at the top of my priority or, or of my list, but from a systematic approach to this problem, rather than looking at things that we don't want to do, knocking them off the list, we need to first decide which things we're willing to take on because gradually we're Because gradually, we're just gonna drop everything off this list and there's gonna be nothing left and we're still gonna have a huge budget deficit. Um, and we just, we just can't pick. Pick away at things we don't like and take them off the list. We've, we've first have got to decide what we can accept. Um, and work our way to the, to our goal. Um, and I'm guilty of that. You know, I don't like this hundred thousand dollar thing because it it's gonna make the problem worse down the line. Um, but I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of knocking it off the list because again, that just is gonna limit our options. More and more, my suggestion would be, let's go back to that personnel list and decide which ones we can accept and, uh, um. And have what we consider to be the least. Onerous impact, um. And and let's make some progress on this. Um, because eliminating things off the list is not making progress.
Yeah, that I misspoke there. What I meant by that is we won't make a decision right now, so. I'm, I am also open to moving to the next. I line item if the rest of the board is. Have to make a motion for that.
No.
No.
Okay. I, I, I personally, I'm ready to move to the next line item, the personnel, um. Section C.
So. We had a lot of slide, we had the same slides as Ms. Brigman went through and Ms. Howser went through. We had the process again and that sort of thing. And we'd be happy to go through those and if there's any specific questions on, uh, this slide. But this was the recommendation, um, from the administration and from the committee, um, in regards to staff. Maybe one twelve is better. I like ninety-seven. So, but, um, this is the the list. Oh, thank you. It's got everything on it. It didn't have the secretaries or the educational assistants, so. Um, keeping Mr. Hendricks's theme of you can put them all in one motion, you can do one at a time, you can take no action. But as Ms. Howser said earlier, staffing, especially with certified staff. Is something that's very statutorily defined because we need to have all the contracts in hand by. The fifteenth by statute, which means the tenth for us to make sure everybody has that in hand. We're planning on bringing to the full board on the twenty-sixth, the contracts, um, and that will assist with this as well, but. If anybody has any questions, we could take those as well.
So what I would suggest and to get the conversation started is I would make them, I will make a motion. To accept these recommendations with the exception of. Uh, I'd like to remove the educational assistants, the very last one, and I would like to, um, include. Uh, option three, I think, for the edge teachers where we phase it out gradually and, uh, we retain edge next year at the eighth grade level. So that's my motion.
For a second.
Second that motion.
Gosh, just seconded.
Question?
Um, the, Mr. Stearman, could you go back to the edge slide, please? Where it shows the different options? You said scenario three, John?
Yes. And. I hope those calculators are flying over there. Any thoughts on what this would? Generate for savings? With those changes?
Yeah, I. Stand average budget we use for a teaching position is eighty thousand. That's not tied to a particular person. So that would be a difference of eighty thousand versus two hundred and forty thousand.
But I meant the whole proposal.
Oh, gotcha.
Sorry.
One point three million.
That would be about, um, six hundred and ninety thousand for the teaching. Teacher positions. And then both educational assistance you would remove, so it would just be the one secretary. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
What was the first thing she said?
Six ninety.
Six ninety was six.
Six ninety plus.
Plus sixty thousand for a, a secretary position. And keep in mind, these are based on our average teacher position. They do not reflect actual, uh, people, so that, that could differ.
All right, and and so then if that would be adopted, that brings our total to one point eight. Five, six, so one point eight million. Leaves us yet with a million dollars worth of cuts, but. You know, we're make, we'd be making progress.
Any other discussion?
So that's total of seven hundred and fifty thousand is what that would cut?
That's the estimate, yes.
So we, we would keep two of the edge teachers and then the two EAs, so those four. Positions would stay at this point. And that brings that total up to one point three million for that whole list? Is that?
No.
Reading that right?
That brings that staffing list to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying, so that's what our, our savings there would be if if your motion passes, because we remove those four positions, right? That two edge, but and then those four positions would bring the entire list up to the ceiling that was listed of one point three million.
No.
No.
I recall that feeling was looking at tier one and tier two positions. We are not even recommending the tier two positions. We're only recommending. I would, I would not look at that range we originally gave you because our thinking has changed since that was first created.
That's, that's helpful. So, Mr. Asmussen. So i- given the situation right now, two point eight million dollar reduction required. With the staffing and the reductions we did previously were at one point eight six six. Or one million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven with a balance of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirteen. Is that correct approximately?
Well, yeah, but yes.
Okay. Okay. That's a dent.
So and if I recall, the previous referendum was seven hundred and fifty thousand, correct? So the seven fifty, because we can go back to referendum in the fall, right?
Absolutely.
Night would be the next date per statutory guidelines.
So we could essentially then go back to referendum for a million dollars or nine hundred thousand versus two point eight million.
Or two point one.
Two point one, right.
I thought we was, we were gonna have to cut regardless whether the, the, uh, referendum passed or not. We had to come up with seven, seven hundred thousand.
We've come up with seven hundred. We've, right now, we've come up with one point eight six million.
But we. But with the referendum was for two point eight.
No.
Eric. Two point one.
Two point one.
Yep.
Right. In addition to that seven hundred.
We only required that our directors cut seven hundred thousand. We didn't require them to cut. Anything beyond that. We have to do that because that's what our budget requires of us.
That's what I'm saying.
But. But if we, when Ms. Presswood is saying is we've reduced by one point eight million, we have nine hundred and thirty-three thousand left. We could potentially ask. Our constituents in August for a one million dollar referendum, not a two point one million or a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar referendum.
Right.
And not have to make another reduction beyond what we're looking at right now.
Or we could work really hard and bring it down to seven fifty and just stay with the same damn number we've been using for fifteen years.
So I.
I feel that with the people in the room that they would be more agreeable to what we're discussing now because it. Keeps our school open and, you know, it takes care of a couple of those other things that we were looking at. I, I think. It would be easier. To go back to referendum in August with people having the knowledge that they want and that they're asking these questions. That we now have answers to give to them as to how we got to that.
Mr. Asmussen, I just want to make sure that we're, we're staying on point rather than talking about a referendum. Um, and please keep in mind that the two point eight was established. That does not include inflation. Include if we want to add more to the teachers' compensation model and the classified. Uh, in middle management and administration, um, so there's a lot of additional costs that the two point eight million. Um, because the, the list was more than two point eight as a, as a guide as well. But knowing that two point eight is probably not going to get us. What we actually need potentially when you start, because Leah did her figures with four por- four percent. Of salary increase. For the teacher compensation model, CPI is four point seven one. We'll need to negotiate. We need to do those things. So and the cost of everything isn't going down since we set that number. So there's gonna be a lot more discussion and I, I think we need a little bit of time for Leah to start running the numbers. And figure out what, where we're at right now. So instead of guessing and start to project, this is what we need if we want a four point. Seven one increase with compensation. If we want a five percent, if we want this, because we will need to attract and retain our current staff as well, and we're not just talking certified staff.
And so, Mr. Asmussen, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Am I good? Uh, my point is, we've made considerable progress for what we need. We don't have to come up with everything tonight. But we've made progress in the right direction. And so I, you know, I don't know that we need, would need to go further than that tonight, so.
We do, though. We have to figure out the, the staff because we have.
Oh, absolutely. There's a motion on the table right now, of course. Yep. Yep. Was there a second with that? Gosh, did. Okay.
Any other discussion? Wolf call, Mo, please, Wendy?
Yes.
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 Okay, um, ju- just a note. Um, I.
Leah had her hand up there for a sec.
Do you mind if I just clarify one item? We had talked about the three main things we need to. That are very time sensitive. We just accomplished the staffing. We already accomplished the technology. The third was transportation. Um, even if we don't have a decision tonight, can I get some type of guidance I could give back to Southwest so they can keep moving forward with their processes? Is that something we're gonna be interested in looking at? I don't know if you're ready to talk about that tonight, um. If I could give any type of feedback, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Asmussen, oh, go ahead, Heidi.
I, I think that the different scenarios you gave in the weekly update, I think if we can get those. Um. Comparables and and what those different changes would look like, I think that would be a good start.
I agree.
Okay, I guess for me, I, I just would caution, I'll be gone, but to caution the board that, um, if you're gonna look down the road at a referendum in August. And you're gonna start delaying this stuff thinking that. You gotta get it done. Okay, you can't leave all this stuff hanging, hoping that August is gonna change everything. It may not.
For sure. Mr. Asmussen, do you need a motion for us to move to executive session?
Uh, yeah. Make a motion and go into closed session.
I'll second.
Uh, hang on, I gotta read this. I'll take a motion for discussion of possible action within executive session regarding an individual's employment per Wisconsin statute nineteen. Point eight five sub one, sub, sub C. Considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation. Data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction. Or exercises responsibility.
I made the motion. Before you folks leave, I'd like to thank you for your input tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
It was very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Asmussen, I will second that motion.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Are we going?